I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Well, the first order of business is to induct our commissioner-elect. And I believe Judge McNeese is here, and I think if the victim will stand, come forward. We'll put you down by that microphone, Derek, if you'd pick that one up for us, please. Just before you start, this is part of the procedure where Commissioner Alec resigned, and the commission last week voted unanimously to appoint Derek Benaville as the new commissioner. Judge?
Okay, Mr. Benaville, would you raise your microphone please? I, J. Derek Benaville.
I, J. Derek Benaville.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Oregon.
And of the State of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of Commissioner of the City of Oregon City.
Faithfully perform the duties of Commissioner of Oregon City.
During my incumbency there.
We'll have a short, yeah, after he signs out, we'll have a short celebration here. We have a cake for him, then we'll get down to business. And his family's here somewhere. Where are we all sitting? Yes, you certainly can. Take the microphone there. Good.
Well, Mr. Mayor and city commissioners, I appreciate you appointing me to this position and having the confidence in my abilities. I have some big shoes to fill. Even though Eddie Alec was pretty short in stature, he was big in heart. And he's done a lot, sacrificed a lot of his time for this city as city commissioner and mayor. And if I can even do a fraction of what he's done for the city, I think I've done a good job. One thing that I want to bring up that's really important, that I feel strongly about, and that's citizen involvement. And I hope that people like you will start attending a lot more of the city commission meetings, the planning commission meetings, the various workshops, CIC, your neighborhood associations, because that's the only way that I or my fellow commissioners can get informative and impartial decisions to very critical issues like the one we have tonight. So I hope that you will attend and participate with the city. I'd like to thank Mary Palmer and all the people that have worked with me at CIC and the neighborhood associations, because I really do feel that you guys are the ones that helped me develop the leadership skills that I need to do this job. So I hope I don't let you down. So, other than that, there's some cake, and we'll get to business.
Your lovely wife to stand on.
Oh, yeah, actually, yeah, absolutely. My better half. This is my wife, Michelle. And my daughter, Caitlin. Stand up. Stand up. And my son, Blake, in front. So I thank everyone for attending.
Words well spoken, Commissioner. You can take your seat and cut the cake. Not in that order, yeah, right.
Everyone will have a piece of cake. There's plenty here, please. You guys are leaving without cake? That's gotta be a first.
Yeah, that's a first.
That's right. Now, it's your Energizer package. Wait, high in sugar. No more subdivision, DePaul.
We got one that's starting to heat up, an old one that. He did a lousy job of keeping all that paperwork together on it, so. Mark Hinton, does that ring a bell? You know him? You know what we're up against then? We may have to call in the dogs here one of these days.
Jerk-o.
Yeah. We're meeting with him tomorrow, so give me a better feel of where we're at.
It's right over here, right behind there. You bet. No, not you. German humorist?
We can get down to business now. This special meeting was called as a continuation of the one issue on last Wednesday night's meeting concerning the annexation of the islands which have been created in the city. We've had the public hearing, heard a lot of testimony, and we had some debate, and we came to a deadlock. And it was decided we'd go get our new commissioner elected, and then we'd continue the vote. And in the meantime, our attorney has arrived at some conclusions about what we can and can't do. And I wonder if we might have that now.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. As a result of the last meeting, I did some research over the possibility of both advisory and binding votes. Spent some time Saturday and today, and I've conferred with the Secretary of State's office, and they have confirmed my conclusions on the matter. First, relating to the advisory vote, I've concluded that an in-city advisory vote is authorized by state law. That's no surprise to you. But because the city has a binding vote requirement anyway, that's probably superfluous. The more surprising conclusion that I reached was that an out-of-city advisory vote is not only not authorized, but the county elections officials are not allowed to participate in such a vote, mainly because statute doesn't provide for it. Turning to the second set of issues which relate to a binding vote, you all know, and my research confirms it, that certainly you can, and in Oregon City's case, we do, require a referendum on all annexations. The issue to me was the one that Commissioner Neely raised, and that was, can you also include the people in the islanded territory? The answer is yes, but not in the same way that it was originally suggested, I believe, by Commissioner Neely, and I'll be glad to respond to his or your questions on the matter. Oregon law does provide for a waiver of election in several circumstances. When there's a majority petition, which is generally what you see before you, when there's a health hazard annexation, or when the city charter dispenses with that requirement. We have, on the other hand, not only not dispense with it, but we require it. As to folks who live in the islands, Oregon law provides, but does not require, an election that includes the folks in those areas. And the way the election law is set up is that if you have a vote for areas outside the city, under state law, both the folks in the city and the folks in the islands must approve. There is no cumulative vote, so that the majority of the overall vote prevails. I will also tell you that whether or not there may be a vote which includes people in the islanded areas is open to some doubt. There's a separate statute dealing with island annexations. You'll see it in the memo, 222-750. It has nothing to do with the rest of the annexation statutes, was adopted at a wholly different time, and nobody really knows what the relationship of the two sets of statutes are. But the normal annexation statutes, 222-111, and related statutes, do provide for a vote for people inside the city and in areas to be annexed to the cities. I have inferred, and nobody in the state election system has said that this is incorrect, that you may, but are not required, to have a vote for the folks in the islands. But if you do that, it's gotta be a city vote and the island vote, and if the total of one or the other says no, there is no annexation. And again, I will say for the umpteenth time, you don't have to have a vote. That's really a question for the city commission. But those are the legal parameters within which I believe you operate.
Commissioner Hewitt, I think you said you might have a question here. I do.
What I'm trying to do is, obviously, you've studied this, you've gone through the law, and you understand what you just said.
I hope so.
Okay. I don't.
Okay.
And so where I'm coming from is, I think what I heard you say is, we could have a vote.
Yes.
And the city and the islands could vote, but if either the islands said no or the city voters said no, it would go down.
Correct.
Okay, so quite, quite the contrary to what I was assuming I was coming into tonight. It looks like Commissioner Neely's question has been answered in the affirmative here. Am I correct in that assumption?
Not entirely, because the question is, I understand it was framed in this way, and Commissioner, you can correct me if I'm wrong. And that is that the commissioner wanted to have the cumulative vote. In other words, if there are 20,000 votes in the city and 5,000 votes in the islands, if you got 13,000, the annexation passed.
Okay. Then my question is, if we allowed, as a commission up here, to allow the city to vote and separately allow the annexation people to vote, we know, before it even goes to a vote, that it would go down, because we know that the annexation, the 29 islands, would vote against it.
That's a political question beyond my competence.
Well, based on the conversation we had here last week, I don't think it was.
Okay, that's not a legal question.
Yeah, it's not a legal question. So, well, okay, my legal question is, how would we go about that? And could we do that to where this would make any, getting on the voting sequence that we have to get into by next May? Because my issue then is, are we really hurting the coffers of the city at this time? And I don't think we are.
And of course, I can't answer that.
I know you can't answer that. So I guess my discussion, to continue on what the discussion is, do, we're not hurting anybody if we held out and allowed these people to vote. The problem is, is, in my mind, it's a forgone conclusion, and you've got, I don't know, 600 people, and you've got 27,000 people, and you've got 600 people, if they say no, you've got 27,000 people that could say yes, and they would be outvoted by 600 people. And there's something wrong with those numbers, something wrong with some fairness issue, which I think the attorney was alluding to in his discussion here about fairness.
Were there any other questions legally of the attorney, Doug?
Just to be clear, and you made it clear to me, that we could put forward a charter amendment, and it could not change these requirements.
It would not, because what you'd need to do really is to change state law. Other than going through what I've just mentioned to you of having a dual vote with either one in the negative, just terminating the whole annexation proceeding.
Commissioner Holliday?
Let me be clear on this. According to what I read in the memo, we wouldn't have to go through and make a charter change to do this. This is already provided for in state law.
It is.
Okay, so either.
Just to be clear again for Commissioner Neely, because I think I understood his question. Even if his desired amendment were to the charter, it would not affect the legality of Clackamas Counties not undertaking this effort.
Okay, everybody's clear on that? We had two motions that were deadlocked. Is there another motion? Commissioner, do you wish to speak to this before we go any further? You heard it all last week. Just push the white one.
Push the white button.
Thank you. Got a couple of questions. First of all, this is the first time I've actually seen this memo, so I haven't really had an opportunity to really digest it, so I'm taking your word for it, so. Couple of questions, one for you, Assistant City Manager, was, there was two big issues that I listened to last Wednesday. One was, you know, the ability for the county-island people to vote. And the other one was this whole issue about sewer and emergency annexations due to a septic tank failure. And I don't know if the island people really understand what impacts if their septic tank, their system fails. I know that, what, for a long time, we didn't have any emergency annexations, and then within a year, we had almost four of them. So what's the cost impact, and really, kind of step by step, how much it would cost for them to do so?
Well, I'll get you up to the point where you can get it to a vote of the people, and then beyond that, it's all guesswork. But there's a $2,500 annexation application fee. There is a $3,000 deposit required for election costs. There's a cost of hiring someone to put that application together for you, because it's not simple. It's not something a layman could or should do. That could be anywhere between $1,500 and $2,000, depending on how much time they put into it, because there's two public hearings that they would have to attend. There's a metro mapping fee, assuming that it goes to an election and is annexed into the city. So you take in all those costs, you're looking at between $7,000 and $8,500, $7,900, somewhere in there. That's just to get it to a vote of the people. Now, after that, you have a $100 sewer connection fee, which is, I mean, it's money, but it's insignificant compared to what it took to get you there. And there are no SDCs unless you're developing your property. So the only other real hard cost, other than the election or the getting it to a vote and hooking up the sewer, are the actual construction of the sewer line. And I can't even comment on that, because there's too many variables in there that every case could be different.
Right. So it's really, you know, I mean, potentially, it could be a gamble that, you know, your septic system could last for life, but potentially could fail.
Right.
Okay. And I think you've answered my question in regards to voters able to vote on this annexation. I think that's all my questions right now.
All right. Mr. Mayor? Commissioner Holliday?
Move to approve proposed Resolution 01-31.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Commissioner Neely?
I guess my philosophy hasn't changed, just because state law doesn't permit. We're, we are effectively disenfranchising people at the onset when they come to the city. They have no voice, unless we wanted to go to the other option, which I'm sure there's not a sentiment in the commission to do so, because I think the implication, or the inference, I guess, made by Gary was most certainly correct. We might have an Audubon Island that might come in, but most of them would probably opt not to.
I have a question. Can you do it singularly? No.
Well, you probably could do it. I don't know.
I don't. If you don't bring it.
It is a question.
We need to ask the question. If that, if the election were to occur, would that be on an area-by-area basis or congregate?
Congregate. That's what's proposed now.
That's the way it was delivered.
Aggregate, actually.
Yeah, aggregate. Make up a word.
I have a, sir. Are you done?
Have you finished?
I'm finished.
I was earlier this evening talking to someone that said that they actually live outside the city limits of Oregon City, but have an Oregon City address, and they were feeling that if, they were kind of the opposite argument that I had last week. They're saying, okay, if you're gonna allow these people to have a say in what goes on in the city that surrounds them, just because they are surrounded by the city, that there should be, say, people at least out to the urban growth boundary, if not those people outside the urban growth boundary, because when a city makes a decision on something, it affects people outside just the boundaries of the city, and that's pretty obvious, which I thought was a fairly decent argument. But I see this argument here kind of swaying in the favor of minority, which bothers me, because we've got, like I've already stated, we've got thousands of people out there that could be preempted by a few, and that's where I'm bothered by this.
Commissioner Holliday?
Well, my intention last week had been to leave after this discussion, but I spent another hour and a half outside on the steps, talking to about 40 or 45 folks on the issue, and listened to both sides for a long time. What it really comes down to for me is that these 600, 700 people are receiving services, some, to some cases, more or less than maybe the average citizen is in Oregon City, depending on exactly where they are and all of those issues. But the fact remains is they are being provided city services, whether we're talking about water, sewer, police, fire, medical, whatever the case may be, but they are not paying into our tax base. And the real issue is an issue of fairness for all of the people of Oregon City, not just these 600 or 700 folks that are in these islands. It's not a good situation. It's a bad situation that previous administrations from 1844 all the way up to this year have allowed to occur. Unfortunately, there's nothing I can do about that. But what we can do is make sure, and our ordinance is due now, that that can occur again. So, yeah, it's gonna be painful for some people. It's not, it's, you know, realize $366 is a lot of money to a certain percentage of those folks. But overall, this is the best thing for us to do for the city as a whole.
I find myself a little embarrassed here in a sense, because apparently I wasn't as persuasive as Commissioner Neely has been on this point, because I raised this issue in 1997 and '98, actually, and I got no response from any of the commissioners at that time nor anyone else. I argued that this was the wrong thing to do, to take, vote these folks in without their permission. And I kept saying that, and I've said that about, well, up until the time we signed that ordinance, when I caved in and said, well, it looks like it's impossible, and it looks like the reasons are pretty good for doing it. So I'm, maybe if this issue had been raised back then a little harder, Doug, maybe I'd have been with you on this, but I, at this time now, I've finally come to the point where I'm, I support the annexation, even though we can't make it work for those folks in the islands.
I would like to respond to that. The only time we publicly discussed this, really in detail, with the public involved, was at the last commission meeting. The fact that we're bringing things really at the deadline to get it onto a ballot title, I think is a mistake. I mean, I think this issue probably could have come up a month or two before it was on a ballot title, and we could have had this debate and not necessarily had to make a decision immediately, which is what we're forced to do. to make a decision immediately, which is what we're forced to do.
Well, I could just repeat, when Commissioner Lynch sat there and raised the issue, I made my feelings known at the time, and there was no support to do anything else, so I just want to make sure people understand that I also have a little heartache over that issue, that we can't get folks to vote on this, but I still think that the right thing to do is to vote the islands on the ballot, so.
Well, Commissioner? Commissioner?
Well, overall, I'd have to agree with the mayor. I was sitting in the audience last Wednesday, and I was really stewing over it, and I listened very intently with the very people that were speaking here. I understand exactly where all of you are coming from, and I appreciate you not calling me and trying to lobby me on your side. I appreciate that. I did a lot of homework even after that, spoke a lot with city staff, and even, I think I'm one of the ones that actually asked the attorney to come up with more about the requirements for having the county have the opportunity to vote on it, the island annexations. But it does bother me to see that a minority can actually overrule a majority, and I'm being appointed as a city commissioner to represent the citizens of Oregon City, and I would feel that I'm not, I'm not doing my job if that's the case. In regards to public hearings, there was that proposed Resolution 9939 back in October 99, and we had public hearings for that, and I don't know how many people actually came to that, but that was, you know, getting the process of doing island annexations. Plus, we had various other ones, including our budget committee meetings, planning commission meetings, that type of thing. So there was some opportunity, I felt, for public input.
I don't think the resolution required notifications of all the residents in the island annexations. I don't think it did. Otherwise, we would have had the same kind of turnout at that, in that meeting that we had at the other one. So it's not quite the same.
Well, then, maybe we should have.
Commissioner Holliday, you started to say something.
Well, I had just one comment. You know, I certainly agree with you, Mayor, that we could have done a better job of having a discussion about this, but it doesn't change the base facts, and even had we talked about this in '98, '99, and brought it up, the conclusions in law would still be the same, and that we would be in the same position two years ago that we would have been in today. So I don't know that it makes a huge amount of difference. I'm, once again, it's a fundamental issue of fairness for everyone in the city, and I think that, you know, if everybody's getting services, then everybody ought to be paying for them. And Doug, if there was a way for us to have a vote, for us to do an aggregate vote, I would support it.
You didn't when I made the motion last time.
Well, that's not the issue.
Commissioner Hewitt?
I, I agree with what's been said here tonight. I see the issue, and I understand what Commissioner Benville has been saying. My problem is, and I think I share that problem with Doug, is perception. And we're perceived as a commission that does thing at the last minute. We bring it to the last minute for public debate, and I want that to change. And publicly, I'm going to speak to what Doug said tonight and say that I'd like to see staff really be aware that if we're going to be bringing something that's going to affect 600 to 700 people, that we've got to be sensitive to that and bring it in a timely manner to where we're not jammed up against voting and getting it on the ballot, and I don't care what it is. We've just got to be more timely with this, so we get proper public debate on this issue. And I know that not everybody can come to all these budget committee meetings and all these things, but they are there, and they are a valuable place to be heard, and believe me, we listen. I think the commission listens. I thought we listened last, at the last meeting, and I think the stalemate shows the community that we listened. I think that this new information is showing that we also listen to our attorney, which we pay to listen to. That's all I have.
Do we pay him? No, we didn't. All right, and anything else? We'll call the question. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Holliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
No.
Commissioner Benville?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
That deal is done? Anything else tonight, gentlemen? Anything on your minds since we're here? Commissioner?
Actually, I got one thing. Now that we did this, one of the gentlemen that spoke last Wednesday was interested in what, where the nearest sewer line was. So I would really like to make sure that we have either a meeting with the county-island people. I think that we, this is still just to go to the ballot. I mean, this is still an opportunity to fail, so we can still go to those citizen of Oregon City and speak your mind. We do have neighborhood association meetings that you're all within your islands, so I would hope that we would have speakers to educate those people at our neighborhood association meetings, and hopefully you can attend those meetings as county islands, and understand the benefits and also the cons, and really bring a utility map and show where your, the nearest sewer connection is, and really educate them. That's what I would like.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yeah, the real short and sweet, hopefully, that Wednesday, the 22nd of this week, we are going to be looking at spending the city's money as far as urban renewal goes. There's going to be a roundtable discussion, there's going to be some issues that are already on the staff's agenda, and there's going to be a plate that we're going to try and put other people's ideas on that plate. Myself and especially Commissioner Holliday has brought up the potential of putting a parking lot downtown. A parking garage, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's because the parking lot that we have down there is just that. It's nothing grand, and this is urban renewal money to try and generate and spur business downtown. That's what urban renewal is for. So the 22nd, at what time? 7:30?
Seven o'clock.
At 7:00 in these chambers?
Yes.
In these chambers. Urban renewal. Thank you.
Anything else? If not, Mr. Manager, anything else you wish to address tonight? Meeting's adjourned.
Please sign.
Thank you. I think 7:30.
Is that it?
Yes, sir. Thank you. You don't use your ice, you use your ice, okay?
They use the ice, but you can put this back in the fridge.
Okay, I shall.
7:30.
There you are.
Thank you. How was your road ride?
My... Well, it was 500 miles round trip, driving. So, Coyleum on the upper Yakima.